You guys ready?
Yeah, yeah, it was. Not too much. Just a buzz.
Let me know when you're ready.
Ready?
Yep, okay, very ready.
May the audience please rise to the presentation of the colors.
That's okay. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular board meeting for the Milani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board Thirty-Five. I called this meeting to order and ask Scout BSA Troop Six-Six-Four to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
May the audience please rise to the presentation of the colors. Color Guard, attention. Color Guard, forward march. More time, march. Right real march. Halt. May you, may the audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Scout salute. On my honor, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Two. Color Guard, more time, march. Right real march. Forward, march. The audience may be seated. Color Guard dismissed.
Hey, thank you very much, Troop Six-Six-Four. And before we move on, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. This is our first board meeting of the new year, so Happy New Year to everyone. I'm going to turn it over now to Vice Chair Thomas Shiro to go over meeting decorum.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. In terms of meeting decorum, Happy New Year, everyone. We, on behalf of Chair Hazama and your Milani Maoka and Launani Neighborhood Board, we welcome all the, your feedback, all your suggestions and ideas. We just kindly ask that if you want to speak, to please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair. He will signal you then to come up to the microphone. And then you may again present your concern or idea. For those joining us virtually, please mute your speakers. Same thing, you could use the hand sign if you have something to say and want to be recognized by the chair. And finally, we just ask that you possible keep it, your suggestions and comments to about three minutes so we can get as many people to participate and contribute as possible. Thank you very much. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So, board members, oversight by the chair. I did not put on the board agenda recognition this evening for our departing military representative to the board, Lieutenant Colonel Dan Antolos. So can I get a motion to add that item to the agenda? So move by Alice Rogers. Do you have a second? Second by Teresa. Any, do we need a, we can go unanimous consent with this, or, okay, any objections? Any abstentions? Anyone online with objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion is passed with unanimous consent. We'll now move on to recognitions at this time and ask Alice Rogers and our military rep, Thomas Shiro, to go up to the microphone. Yeah, Colonel, you got it? Yep.
And we have a certificate of recognition here that, on behalf of the Milani Maoka Launani Neighborhood Board Thirty-Five, we'd like to recognize Lieutenant Colonel Dan Antolos for his outstanding service as our military community liaison from July two thousand and twenty-one through December two thousand and twenty-three. Lieutenant Colonel Antolos has been a critical conduit between our military partners and residents in providing information and updates as well as addressing all our concerns. And also, as a fellow member of our community, we share our commitment and pride in helping make it a better place for all to live, work, and play. We wish Dan all the best and success in his future endeavors, especially as he retires from the Army. But Dan, this is just something, a small token of our appreciation, on behalf of Chair Hazama and all the members of the Neighborhood Board, to just say thank you. Thank you very much for your service and for a job well done.
All right, take a, um. Yep, go ahead. Few words.
Board, thank you very much. Dean, Keith, Alice, Teresa, everybody else, Steve. Like I said at the last meeting, you're the longest-serving board I've been with since I've been on island. But since I came on board, you were all very welcoming, very inviting, and then pass the information that I need to help, you know, maintain our lines of communication between us and the military respectively. And then to everybody else that's come forth and provided comments, again, I don't take them lightly because I am part of the community as well. I do understand those concerns, and hopefully through my interaction back to the garrison, I provided some positive feedback of, we do understand, we try to do what we can to be, to live homogeneously, and understand that it's a shared aspect of being out here and not us versus them type perspective. And I've always taken that throughout my entire career, and I'm glad that you've gotten the best of Dan towards the end of his career. So, thank you very much. This is not lost on me. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Hey, um. Only take a board picture, short recess. Okay, I call the meeting back into order. Move on to our agenda on our meeting. Mother reports Honolulu Fire Department. Are they online? Feeling they're online? Okay, we'll move on to Honolulu Police Department. Lieutenant.
Good evening, board. Good evening. Hello, sir. Good evening, Chair. Good evening, board, and good evening, audience. My name is Officer Tim Inuma with Honolulu Police Department. Happy New Years, everybody. First of all, I just want to start off with our safety tip. So, our safety tip, I kind of want to give awareness to, this is pertaining to the Bahia area, but you know, we have some military folks living in the Milani Maoka area. We do see an increase in auto thefts on base, where suspects are going on base and stealing vehicles from military soldiers and driving them out and committing crimes with these vehicles. We've been seeing an increase again on the Schofield Barracks and Wheeler Side. So if you do know military families on that property, please remind them to lock and secure their vehicles, even though it is a secure facility, somehow these guys are getting in and stealing the vehicles, and please don't leave your keys in the vehicle as well. And if you are also curious about what's happening in the community, there's always the Honolulu crime mapping on our HonoluluPD.org website. From there, you can kind of see what's going on in your community. That's all I have for today, and do I have any questions or?
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any questions for Honolulu Police Department this evening? Any questions from anyone online? Seeing none, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Take care. Yep. Okay, moving on to Board of Water Supply. Kathleen.
Aloha. And Happy New Year. No water main breaks to report, and this year, as is last year, we are going to be pushing a lot of water conservation. So again, please, you know, look for leaks on your property. If you think you have a problem with your water system, give me a call and we'll come out and do an investigation. We won't fix it for you, but we'll tell you where the leak is. I'm really happy to announce, you know, we've had this forty-five-dollar toilet rebate, and we're increasing it to a hundred dollars for a ninety-day period. So if you're looking to do some remodeling in the next few weeks, few months, so starting January nineteenth to April nineteenth, it'll be a hundred dollars. Yeah, really worry. This is to just kind of encourage people because toilets use about thirty percent of the water in your home. So, any questions?
Hey, thank you, Kathleen. Maybe a bad night for water conservation.
Wonderful. I love it.
Yeah, okay, bad time.
This is great for our aquifer.
Any questions for Board of Water Supply? Okay, Teresa.
Hi there. Hi. We call Street Twelve-Inch Water Main.
The project, yeah.
The project that's going on. I noticed, like, there's times like this where we had like a two-week span, so the crews come out and then they're not there. I don't know what the schedule is, but all of the storm drains are blocked, meaning they put the tarp and the sandbags. I know a couple of sandbags look like they got ran over, but I'm just wondering if they're not going to be there for us a bit of time. Maybe they can open that up so that, yeah, because the last week before, when it rained, I mean, it just flooded all the way down to the bottom and just sat.
Oh, I wish, yeah, call me anytime you see that and we'll send the contractor out immediately because they, if they're not going to be working, they should be removing those burritos. Yeah, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Board of Water Supply? Any questions from anyone online? Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Drive safely. Okay, our military representative, Major.
Good evening, Chair. Board. Major Tony Hubner, so I'm Lieutenant Colonel Dan Antolos's replacement. I'm the DCO for one thirtieth. I just a couple of highlights here. So first off, for the February Job Fair, US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding the next hiring fair on February twentieth, which is a Tuesday, at the HMR Youth Center. It'll start at zero eight-thirty in the morning and end at two o'clock. This job fair is open to the public. There will be job offers and provisional hiring the day of the job fair, and applicants may go online prior to February twentieth and click on the employment banner at www.himwr.com, and they can learn of openings there. Additionally, walk-ins are welcome, and if you're a walk-in, you should bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, your resume or application. During this job fair, there's opportunities in the business operations such as golf, bowling, food, services, and more. Additionally, the Child Youth Services, or CYS, will have openings to consider. So for those that work in CYS, there's a variety of benefits such as retirement, access to recreation facilities, discounted childcare, training, commissary and PX privileges. Second thing I'll highlight here is the US Army Garrison published the January Training Advisory for Oahu on January second. So I know we're halfway through January, but there's a few things to highlight here. In January, US Army Hawaii will continue training in the East Range area. So there'll be helicopter training on the eighteenth, twenty-third, and twenty-fifth, and this will be day only. Also, in the East Range, there'll be blank fire training, day only, three January through twenty-sixth January. Then on Schofield Barracks, there's going to be some artillery mortar training, starting on the sixteenth through the nineteenth, on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, on the twenty-seventh and through the thirty-first. And then finally, aviation training, this is complete but day only on the fifth and the tenth of January. And then finally, there's going to be some demo training, day only, twenty-seven and twenty-eight January. And if you have any questions or wish to be added to the training advisory list, you can call the community concern hotline at eight oh eight seven eight seven fifteen twenty-eight. And then finally, good news story, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund has announced display dates for the Wall That Heals, first-ever visit to the state of Hawaii in two thousand and twenty-four. The mobile exhibit will be on display in Hilo twenty-four hours a day, starting January twenty-fourth, until closing at two o'clock on January twenty-eighth. The Wall That Heals is an exhibit that includes three-quarter scale replicas of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, along with a mobile education center. The traveling exhibit honors the more than three million Americans that served in US Armed Forces during the Vietnam War, and it bears the name of over fifty, of over fifty-eight thousand men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam. And then just again, if you do have any concerns or anything like that, you can always reach out to the community concern line at the US Army Garrison Hawaii. The contact information is eight oh eight seven eight seven fifteen twenty-eight, or you can reach them by email at USAG.Hawaii dot com rel, C-O-M-R-E-L, at army dot mail. Any, any questions?
Hey, thank you, Major. Any questions for the military? Go ahead, Alice.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to thank you for sending this Combat Aviation Brigade Whalefire Support Effort Advisory out in November and following up on our problem up behind, up behind us in Milani Maoka. And, and it was very, very good of you to follow up on that.
Hey, thank you, Alice. Any other questions for our military representative this evening? Anyone online? Seeing none, thank you, Major. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to board business. Is there anyone from DOE facilities here this evening? Okay. Seeing none. I was asked by the Honolulu Youth Commission, he's going to run a little late, so I'm going to defer him to later on in the meeting. So we'll move on to residents' concerns. Do we have any residents' concerns this evening? Anyone online? If not, I'd like to introduce our new principal of the middle school, Mr. Shannon Tomashiro. Can you come up with some of his staff that are here?
Hi, good evening, Chair. Good evening, board. I, uh, thank you for allowing us to come and join you today. I just wanted to introduce myself since I'm a new face to all of you. I'm Shannon Tomashiro, and I'm the new principal. Actually, not new, I've been there for a year now as principal. I'm the principal of Milani Middle School, and since our previous principal retired, we've had some changes. So I wanted to introduce our administration team to you as well, too. So I do have three of our assistant principals here tonight. We have five altogether. Greg Nakasone is one of our assistant principals. He's not here. We also have Cheryl and Pang. She's not here as well, too. I do have with me Jeffrey Horstman as one of our assistant principals, Karine Hori Bata, and also Earl Han. Just wanted to come and introduce ourselves to you, just, and I wanted to let you know that I've been a member of our community for over forty years now, and it's a pleasure to serve our community. And just reach out to you. If there's anything that you ever need from me, please don't hesitate to reach out, and we'll be happy to, to respond. Some good news at our school, our assistant principal Jeffrey Horstman, he just was, he just received an award as National Assistant Secondary Principal, Secondary School Principal's Assistant Principal of the Year for Hawaii. So that's really good for our school, yeah. So we have a really strong administrative team. Like I said, if you need anything, please don't hesitate to reach out. I brought a couple of my business cards, which I will leave with you folks, and also some school coins as well, too. So, any questions for me?
Any questions for the middle school?
Just a comment. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I've been the pleasure of being on the, I was on the PT SO board for five years, fundraising chair, and supporting the S C T for about five years. And I'm so honored at the quality of administration we have here. And Shannon's kind of humble. He was brought up inside, he was working at the middle school before, brought up in the middle school system, went off to be a principal in another school, and then when Mrs. Chung retired, Shannon was honored to be, to be brought on as the principal for the middle school, the number one middle school in Hawaii. So thank you for all of you for your service to the community and the school, especially to all of our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Principal Tomashiro, likewise, if there's any issues that we can help you with, then don't hesitate to, you know, contact me or Stephen.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Nice meeting you and your staff.
Nice meeting you, too.
Yeah, take care. Thank you. Oh, hey. Thank you so much. Moving on to Office of Governor Josh Green, Melanie Martin. Mel, you're on.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Opening day is tomorrow, January seventeenth. Just wanted to remind everyone that opening day is tomorrow, as well as all the state-of-the-state addresses on January twenty-second. I believe it's ten AM, but don't quote me, and that's the state-of-the-state address on January twenty-second. Some very feel-good stories in the governor's newsletter, one of which I wanted to point out. Haime specialist on Maui, right after the Maui wildfires, he had an older woman come up to him and ask him for assistance with her property, which was burnt to the ground, and he arranged for transportation for her to go to her property, and he, once he found out that the transportation wasn't going to, that it wasn't, he, no one was able to take her. He took her himself, and she was looking for her husband's urn. And they were able to find it eventually, and I just wanted to let you know that that's just one of the nice feel-good stories in the governor's newsletter, and if you guys need it, just let me know. And there are other very interesting stories in the newsletter, and that's all really I have to report, Chair Hazama. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Governor's Office this evening? Okay, Teresa, go ahead.
Good evening. I just wanted to share an event that's happening tomorrow while there is the opening session. There will be a march to Iolaani Palace tomorrow for Unipah. It is a peaceful march, obviously, and we do have lots of keiki participating in that march down to the palace. So I just wanted to put it out there for tomorrow. It's going to be really special because you'll have the opening session going on, as well as hundreds of Hawaiians, really, and those that want to participate marching down through that district. So my keiki have been to the, to sessions, and they've been on the house floor previously, so they honor the existence of the Capitol and everyone there, but this tomorrow is going to be a beautiful thing, and I, it would be nice if maybe, if during this session or when anyone is going and walking around or taking breaks and they do see, to acknowledge the keiki, especially that are walking tomorrow. Thank you.
We'll do, for sure. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Any other questions for the Governor's Office this evening? Any questions from anyone online? Okay, Mel, send a request again so a DEW didn't show up, yeah, facilities tonight, so. We'll send a request to the Governor's Office for that.
Uh, Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I did get a call. I forget his name, but I got a call last week, two actually, I think, and they were inquiring, making sure that this was the right date and time, but hopefully I'm not misspeaking. They were trying to get ahold of you to explain and write a letter, but they might not have a rep for tonight's meeting. But from what I heard was, it's basically like finalized, done deal, they're putting it in writing, and they were trying to get ahold of you, and they were going to submit a letter. That was the last that I heard, and that was the first that I heard. So, I hope that helps you.
Well, I didn't get an email or a phone call, so trying to wonder what's going on, but, yeah, I mean, that's fine, as long as, if they want to contact me before the meeting, that's okay, but I think we've, Governor's Office followed up with them, and they said that they had it on their agenda as they were about the meeting, so I don't know why they didn't show up. So.
That's, that's my understanding as well, Chair Hazama, and I apologize for that.
Oh, no, no, no problem. Just send a treasure to them and hopefully they'll come. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mel. Anyone from Congressman Ed Case's office on? Is Nestor on? Okay, we'll move on to Office of Mayor Blangiardi. Carrie.
Hi, good evening, Chair, board members. Carrie Casa, Deputy Director, representing, oh, Deputy Director with Budget and Fiscal Services, representing Mayor Blangiardi this evening. I wanted to quickly share, if you don't, every month, I indicate that Mayor Blangiardi puts together his newsletter, and if you never look at any of his newsletter, I would encourage you to take a moment and, and if I could just share very briefly, can you hear me, Dean?
Yeah, go ahead.
A lot of feedback.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. So, um. Here's the mayor's newsletter this, for the month of January. It's a recap of two thousand and twenty-three, and it's, it's really, you know, quite you know, encouraging in terms of all the different departments and highlights what each has accomplished in, in their small, you know, this is just a tidbit of all the many accomplishments that the various city agencies have, have managed to accomplish in two thousand and twenty-three. You know, one that, I'll just share one that really stands out. In E and V, there was eight hundred twenty-three million or thousand tons, sorry, eight hundred twenty-three thousand tons of trash that was disposed by the Department of Environmental Services, and a hundred and one million gallons of wastewater that was treated per day. So it's just, you know, again, if you have a moment, I encourage you to take a look at this. It's on one, oahu dot org, and, you know, you can see the many things that the city has done in two thousand and twenty-three. As for the updates on the issues from last month, the first item being the traffic sign that's repeatedly hit by drivers. This is the sign located at the intersection of Meheula Parkway and Makai, Makai Street, sorry, fronting the fire station forty-one. There's a merge and a U-turn sign that has been hit repeatedly, and wanted to provide an update. So on November twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, the DTS, Department of Transportation Services, did a site inspection and found that there is an existing no-U-turn sign that's adjacent to the signal face, which serves as the primary sign, while the post-mounted sign is supplemental. As such, a work order has been issued to the Department of Facilities Maintenance to remove that post-mounted keep-right-and-no-U-turn sign and post. In addition, to enhance the conspicuity of the painted median island and to promote the safe movement of traffic in the area, additional rave payment markers will be installed in the nose of the painted median island. I reached out today to see if we can get a further update from our Department of Fiscal, I mean, Facilities Maintenance, and I regret that I wasn't able to get the latest and greatest update, but I look forward to giving you more information in the next meeting. As far as the second item, lights at Milani Maoka Park and Ride. So the issue was that with the sun rising later and setting earlier, it was requested that the lights be adjusted to operate from five-thirty PM to seven o'clock AM daily. On November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, our Department of Transportation Services forwarded a request to the Department of Facilities Maintenance to reset the timer for the parking lot lights at the at the Milalani Maoka Park and Ride. And on December fourth, Department of Facility Maintenance staff confirmed that the adjustment had been completed. Moving on to the third item, so there was a repaving of streets in Milan, Milanani Maoka. The community wanted an update regarding the repaving project of of the streets. And additionally, along We Kau Street, the Board of Water Supply is conducting a twelve-inch height replacement project. So is We Kau Street scheduled for repaving after the Board of Water Supply project concludes? So our Department of Design and Construction indicates that the rehabilitation of localized streets Phase Twenty-four A project has been handed off to the Construction Management Branch, and the estimated construction start date is in the second or third quarter of this year. So we're, I would say it's coming up on the third quarter of this fiscal year. And so the contractor is obtaining the required plans and permits. The We, Why Kau Street has not been identified as being in need of resurfacing at this time, and the city currently has no plans to repave the road following the Board of Water Supply project. Are there any questions?
Hey, thank you, Carrie. Any questions for the mayor's rep this evening? Go ahead, Alice.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To, we have a million gallons of wastewater. The question I have is, what are we doing with it? Are we using it as, as, for instance, the city of Irvine has used it on golf courses and stuff like that? Do we have any plans to do that? Are we doing it? What are we doing with all the water?
Alice, I would like to report back to you. There are some of it, as you indicated, some of it does go to other, you know, areas that don't fresh water from border waters. So I, I, rather than me not give you the most accurate information, I prefer to get back to you in the next meeting, if that's okay.
Okay, let's find any other question. Teresa, go ahead.
Hi there. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So last week and this week, I've just been kind of out here. We're at Milani Maoka Elementary. There's always been a lot of issues with the illegal parking and the the school traffic causing backups where last week I timed it, the city bus literally sat in the same spot for twenty minutes because people were just parked on the road. It is only a two-lane road, and you know, nobody can go around because it's in a bend. The other big issue was the parking, illegal parking in the bus stops. And I can see why people are confused. I learned lots of new things about illegal parking last week, but it seems that there is no longer any red paint to help delineate where there really is should be no parking, no stopping, because people forget it's a bus stop, don't stop there. What's, the issue is they're parking all the way to the corner, causing people coming out of driveways, especially at Olaloa on, off of Aina Makua and Makai Kai intersection. They can't make the right turn. Additionally, the bus can't turn, can't come up against the sidewalk to let people out, especially those if they need to be let out on a wheelchair or assisted device. I literally was out there every morning before school and every afternoon after school, just helping folks remember, hey, please let's not park here. Your kids are running in between cars across this traffic. A lot of questions came back, well, why not? And it's obvious, it's within twenty feet of a crosswalk. Nobody knows that. I just learned that recently because I haven't taken my driver's test in over thirty years. But people don't know that. But then, when you can say, hey, there's red curbing, now that makes sense. So this past week, it was really exciting to see all of our bus drivers shaka, just shaka me, because they could pull up, get their people, get their people on and off, and pull back out safely because they had the length of the sidewalk that is designated for them to go out in this intersection. And I'm wondering if there's a way, and we'll be working with the elementary school Vice Principal and JPO program, and hopefully be on next month's agenda. I don't expect the traffic study as of yet. I'm kind of doing that unofficially. But how do we maybe get someone to come out and 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 look at painting the sidewalks and putting up proper signage? And I called OTS, and they were not helpful. When I asked, how come there's so many different bus signs? Some that say no stopping, some that say no parking, some that say no laying down. Like, why can't they all be consistent? There's no stopping, no parking, no smoking, no laying down, what have you. But I've driven around both neighborhoods, and I'm just like, there's so many different ones. And then there's missing signs. And people are confused, how come it looks like you can park here because there's no lines at the corner? Well, because if you look, and I realized that there's a fire hydrant in between the park, the the bus stop and the corner stop sign. So therefore, you should know, ten feet, ten feet, we're not going to put, the city's not going to put lines, that department's not going to put lines because why would you need it? Don't park there. But I can see, and I've taken photos, all those curbs used to be painted red. It's all kind of faded out. I'm wondering, is there a department that drives around and sees, hey, we can paint this red? And if there is, that would be awesome if they stopped at the parking right and painted inside curb red. But if not, I'm happy to paint it. I will work with whatever department, you tell me what line to what line, and I'm happy to paint it. But it really would help us to to stop having people park all over and our Kiki running and darting in between cars. And it really, really made the day of our bus drivers. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the mayor's rep? Any other questions from someone online? So, so Carrie, a couple things. So Teresa, you're right, but if you can go back, DTS has done numerous traffic studies of this area, because at one time, I believe the school wanted to put in some kind of traffic signal to help them with traffic things. So the study, their study should be on record still. You know, and painting, painting things would help, however, we still got to work with the middle school to get their parents to not park in no parking zones, because paint's not going to stop them from parking anywhere, so. So we got to do that too as part of it, but there is a traffic study for this area, for the Maoka Middle, Maoka Elementary Intersection, Makai Kai Street and Aina Makua as as well. The second thing is, I'm glad they're taking the signs down. I would, just a recommendation to DTS, maybe on that corner, put some kind of those demarcation things on the road. I call them turtles, but you can call them whatever. Only because, once they figure out that nothing's there and the sign's missing, they're going to start cutting that corner even more. Good news is they won't hit anything because there's nothing left for them to hit, except the curb, which is kind of way far in there. And if they hit that, they're in big trouble. But maybe something where they'll indicate that they're not supposed to make that turn that sharply. Something on the, you know, on the ground. And the last thing is on on Meheu Street. I think DFM needs to go in there, and on the Meheula Parkway side of the street, those sidewalks are being lifted very badly, so there, that whole section needs to be repaired. I have reports of a couple people falling down already because the sidewalk's so bad. Primarily, it's all the trees. It's it's all in the tree areas, so they're going to have to do some derouting and sidewalk repair work on Meheu Street. That's M E H E U Street.
Okay.
Okay.
Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, hold on.
Point of clarification, so the painting actually became a suggestion from a community member who chose very colorful language besides red, that it would make a big difference if we could see that we're not supposed to park there. Because, you know, obviously, the sign and the fact that you're not supposed to park in front of a bus stop wasn't enough. But I think it also will help because we're trying to get parent volunteers possibly to stand outside to make sure our Kiki are getting dropped off accordingly and using our parking lot here, that it would be really helpful where we can just point, it's red. Because that was the biggest thing. Well, it's, why isn't it red? If we can't park, and that came up so many times when I said, hi, we can't block the bus stop. What's not painted? And that that's kind of why, I think, for them, that's their go-to, right? I'm just like, how about just follow the law, just common sense and don't be rude? But that was number one comment that stays in my mind, because I didn't need to hear all the expletives with it, because he didn't want to walk. So I'm just looking at the cheap route and the fast route. But yeah, going forward, we'll, we'll look at it.
Yeah, no, thank you. Anything else for mayor? Okay, thank you, Carrie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to councilmember District Eight, Councilmember Okimoto.
Good evening, Chair Hazama, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Tomashiro, and members of the board, members of the community, both here in person and online. Councilmember Val Akino Okimoto from District Eight, happy to be here. Thank you so much for the discussion. I appreciate all the, all the efforts that you guys are putting into making sure that we're aware of what's happening in the community. So all of you have my written report. I just wanted to go over some of the the bills of note and then some other items just to discuss, and I'll take any questions after that. You do have some things that we're doing in the community, but you can look at that in the newsletter. So just for some legislative updates, in our City Council, Bill Fifty-nine seeks to provide a real property tax incentive for the dedication of real property towards an eligible film study facility, studio facility. The cost of construction and investment needs to be at least one hundred million dollars and a minimum of ten acres. The hope is that the film studio facilities constructed as a result of this bill will contribute to both the growth and health of the film industry, as well as a boost to the investment in the city. This went through second reading, and I think it's with the budget, it will then come to us back in full council next week. Bill Fifty-two provides a more effective deterrent to developers, applicants, planmakers, architects, and or engineer supplying incorrect information on plans that violate the Monster Homes ordinance. The bill is in, has an initial fine of up to twenty-five thousand dollars, plus up to ten thousand dollars per day violation. And this is something I know I brought to you guys before, not something that is an issue, a big issue in our district, but there are some, some areas that have been brought up about monster homes. This pertains mostly to the urban areas where some of my colleagues have really big issues with monster homes being brought up. And finally, Bill Forty seeks to establish additional requirements for the Transit Construction Mitigation Fund. The purpose of the Transit Construction Mitigation Fund is to receive and expend monies to mitigate negative economic impacts from the construction of the Honolulu High Capacity Corridor Project. And just some other notes. Coming up on the eighteenth, there is a special, which is Thursday. We have a budget hearing to reprogram ARPA funds for hazard pay for some, some of the city workers. This is a special hearing. And also an informational briefing regarding the mayor Wright Housing Master Plan. I think we also have a zoning, that's, might be in zoning. Those are two not normal schedules, but coming up on the eighteenth, which is Thursday. We are also getting ready for a budget season, something I was experienced for the first time last year. So now I at least have an idea of what to be prepared for this year. So as an office, we're gathering the community's requests for repairs and new infrastructure. We'll be making several requests, including various park repairs, public safety requests. And also, we've been putting a plug in, especially after what happened with the Maoka wildfires. We are trying to help the department and working with Chief Hau on what can we do to get a second helicopter? They're finishing the procurement of the first one that will really help with these wildland fires and the fires that firefighters can't get to by foot. So I've been putting a plug, and I talked to Congressman Case and trying to see what we can do to work with the federal funding. Chief Hau has some concerns, but I'll continue to work with him to see what we can do. And finally, my office and I, it's not in this, the pictures aren't here, so it may be in the next newsletter, but just so that you know, we did meet with Principal Tomashiro and his staff, because they also had some no parking sign concerns. So my team and I went down. It seems to be an issue with after-school pickup. So along that Lahiva Drive, Lahiva Street, after school, not so much before school, but after school, when the Kiki need to be picked up, the parents are parking alongside, causing congestion. So there is, something happened, there was funding and it got approved to have signs both on the back, which is Kua Oa and Lahiva, but for some reason, the project wasn't completed when Councilmember Sunyoshi was here. So we're following up, we probably have to request funds again. But we did look at it, and we understand what they want. They want no parking signs. Right now, they're putting up temporary little horses out there to stop the parents from parking, but they would like to have us put in permanent signs so that the parents won't park there, and then it won't cause congestion. So we're working with the school on that, just to give you an update. And I think that's it for most of the updates. I don't want to keep you here too long, but I'll take questions and do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any questions? Teresa.
So parking, so most of us, when we drive across Makai, uh, excuse me, um, where is it? Uh, Aina Makua, right along this side. There's just lanes, there's no parking available, there's nothing, there's no parking signs. I don't know why you would need it, knowing that you have to drive, you can't stop. So that's a really bad area that people park, and they leave their car there, and they walk into schools to pick up children. They're parking out there from one-thirty, right here, right here, okay? And then that's the congestion there for people to try to get back, and then, of course, the people lining up to try to get in here. So this week, we were trying to let parents know, this, we cannot park in the roadway, this is an active road. And, you know, they don't have to listen to me, I'm just nobody. But the police, we don't want to use that resource to come on and ticket people or have to tell people. So that whole bus waiting for twenty minutes is because there's twelve parents just waiting to get inside, and everyone else is just stuck in traffic. Because literally, that's how many cars accounted today that were waiting outside to come in just to park. So they were nice, they went around. But I'm wondering, because obviously, no parking signs don't work, and middle school can, you know, agree with that, of course. But I'm wondering if there's.
Sorry, what did, you're saying that they don't work or that they, because they're requesting for us to put it, put it in.
Correct, but now they're having to put horses and all these things to avoid.
Sorry, if I wasn't clear, so there aren't any, they're requesting for no parking signs to be put in.
Correct, but in the meantime, they're putting up something so that people don't park there, because it's not common sense.
I want to make sure.
But here, they're literally in a, in a roadway, right? And so the officers are just like confused, like, why would they? Because people, it's convenient. They don't want to find parking, maybe there's none. I guess I'm what I'm asking for your office, for this area, if it's, I don't know if you have a liaison that we could, maybe you could be an opportunity to meet with at the school level as well, when I talk with them, but to figure out how to get it so that, I'm obviously going to do what they're going to do until they know. But figuring out a way to make sure people realize that that's, it's a roadway. We don't stop in the middle of the road. And of course, they're going to try to do something here at the school to let parents know, but I don't know that there's a way campaign, holding signs, just, I just want to throw it out there. Throw it out there to our, our council member for the area, because it is a city street that I don't know if you've had anything similar.
Concerns brought to my attention, to my office. But if the school would like to reach out, and we can, we have, normally, I know it, because it is a D O E school, we don't do D O E facilities, but like the middle school, if it's something that's silly related, you know, to our streets, then we gladly. But I don't want to overstep also the principle, I'd like to see what their plan is. And I think one of the main things is to definitely get a bulletin out to the parents, although I know that that doesn't guarantee anything, but education is always the equalizer, so educating the parents on what, you know, they should and shouldn't do. And even talking to the Kiki sometimes, the kids go home, and the kids hold us accountable. So I would start there, and then they can definitely reach out to us. I haven't heard anything, though.
Yeah, so that's why part of it is because we were kind of checking, I would, we just wanted to touch base to see if any complaints have come in.
I will say, I do avoid the street, though, if I'm coming, I don't, I try really hard to not come down the street during the school time.
Yeah, and we've been talking to with our community police team too, because they're just.
And they're wonderful, but yeah, they're busy too. Yes, okay. Well, what has, because it sounds like, is this like a new concern? I haven't heard this before.
Yeah, traffic congestion during the school areas is hard for them because it's kind of congested.
Is it getting worse? I knew it was always an issue, that's why I avoid the street. Was it getting worse?
The school has tried various, various things about, you know, trying to move their parents in and out as fast as they can.
Still.
And they can only do so much because they're staff. I'm not a staff person, I'm a volunteer community member, because I've been getting, I've come through here, and I haven't been able to move.
If you look on Makai Kai Street, there's, there's a painted area with some boulevards on it. But that was one way for to to mark off illegal parking areas for the thing, so kind of put physical stuff in there. But you're right, it's, it's going to have to be a combined effort, you know, with authorities and with the school to get the word out to their parents and stuff. And I know other schools, especially in this area, have held traffic, traffic safety mornings.
Right.
With the faculty and the students and stuff.
Yes, I think they've even had, that's when the, the community police officers have been come out.
Police officers.
And I'll, I'll go in support too if there's a time I know that I can be there. But let me also check with DTS. I know, like you said, that every time we go to them, we get told how the traffic studies take forever. And I ask why, and I've been told why, but I can kind of get a backstory from Director Morton and see also what's going on with the situation. Because we know this has always been an issue, but this is the first time I'm hearing that.
It's actually not, it really isn't an issue except for the fact that parent, well, people park in the lane that you should be driving. So today, when I shared, okay, we're, we can't block the sidewalk, maybe we can go around or come inside, see if you've got parking, but we cannot park on the road. And I'm just, like I said, I'm just a parent, nobody, my kids don't come here. But you know, the staff and a lot of the parents, they, they came up to me after and they're just like, we have never seen this area so clear and we got in here so quickly. And the kids were, this area was clear before two twenty and they're just, they're usually here till two thirty. I mean, the staff actually came up to me and a lot of the parents were just like, I thought I was late, there was no car. And we got in less than ten minutes and out the door. And they said that's, that's never happened. I'm like, then we need to, because it literally was twelve, twelve cars, that's it, twelve cars to go around. But if twelve cars are parked in the road, nobody's moving.
Do you know if the campus here does, I know every campus is different, but like what EK they do, the campus police officers and I, they're limited to just the driveway in and out. But does Mauna have the GPOs or, or is it just the back, the back crosswalk?
They have one in the back and in the front here.
Not, okay.
And they have a crossing guard, I think most of the.
For the intersection.
Mahaula Parkway.
Yeah, okay. I'm just wondering if, okay, okay. Chair, would you like me to, anything else you, I'll, I'll talk to Director Morton, I'll see or Vice Deputy Director and see.
The school's principal.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you for your concerns.
Just a quick one, Val, thank you very much for your report. I had a question, I, on your narrative on Bill fifty-two, deterrent for developers et cetera, the comment with monster homes ordinance. Did you happen to see the report from the legislature on the Maui Lahaina fires?
I did not, I did not.
They covered why, how, uh, remediation. And then they said, no, what are we gonna do? Because we need housing for Maui. One thing they mentioned, two items they mentioned about being deterrents to providing more housing for the people of Hawaii. This is a legislature report, um, was the discouragement for quote unquote monster homes are what they used as multi-generational family homes. And we know that a lot of our kids are grown now, they want to come home. But for them to actually purchase a home here, um, is more expensive than Canada mainland. I had that occur with my daughter and they ended up buying a home and they paid it off in like, you know, short order. But here, so I'm just wondering, I haven't seen the narrative on Bill fifty-two or the definition of monster homes. But I'm wondering if we need to take a second look at that because if we're telling, and there's a common agreement about having a home, you know, increased parking on the street, et cetera, et cetera, except that if the definition of a multi-generational home would be so that you can have enough space for found members to come in multi-generational. And I see that supportive.
And you're right, we all know, I mean, I'm hoping that my daughters one day can afford to live here. I don't know if that's going to be reality, but these monster homes, again, are the ones that are happening where there's, they're humongous, they're, they're built. And we know when we look at them that this is not from, this is for profit. This is for someone who is trying to take advantage and put as much as they can to sell units or rent units out. This bill specifically is not about, um, what regulating the monster home. It's about people who are being deceptive in their requesting permits and, and applying for things, from my understanding. So this one, because, um, my colleagues who again have this more of an issue in their districts, they're having extreme difficulties with people applying for things and then not being upfront. And, and I had, I did have some reservations about the way the bill is written, but I understand the intent of it. So this one specifically is more when they're, um, they're supplying incorrect information to get not like a multi-generational home, but a home that definitely is there. You see, I've seen it and it's, you know that it's some investor who probably doesn't even live here. And he, he or she is creating this home to get profit. And that's where really we have to address because then it takes away home inventory for the locals who are trying to survive here. But I'll gladly, you know, if you want to talk to, uh, my, me and my staff on the side about what you read in that report and how we can look at what we can do to address, um, regulating new developments. And we're glad to listen to your, your suggestions and input. But this bill specifically for, um, people who are being deceptive in applying for certain things when they're trying to create or develop properties.
Great, I'd be glad to share that, just so that we allow provision for a multi-generational home.
Okay.
Because also that's positive in our Ohana culture. Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Anything else, anybody online? So that one thing before, so.
Okay.
I think November and October, we, we brought it up because of the fires in Mauna.
I don't remember, sorry.
Yeah, because of the fires back there. So we were going to again surface, um, an old, I guess, property idea about the, the emergency access road out of Mauna.
That's right, that's right.
So at this time, the only logical place to put that is on the outside of the park, which is will probably require a county easement to the state in order to get that road.
I, I did go to the, the department and I mentioned it, but they, I, I can follow, it doesn't sound like it's possible. But if you can tell me specifically, and you're right, you reminded me, thank you, that there was an easement part that you want, we have to work with you guys to get it so that. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we can fit the road to get another access out of here.
Well, it'll be a, it'll be a state, a DOT road because it's gonna hook up to the H two.
To H two.
But they gotta, they have to have that easement in order to go through the.
Okay.
Because the only logical place now is to have guys drive out, you know, past that direction.
Right.
Where it's gonna, it's gonna head north, but at least we get the people out.
I looked, I tried to see the best my office and I came up with, without having to do that was by the, the dog park. I, I was trying to figure how we could get.
A little further, probably a little further north of that.
Past it, okay.
Because right now that, that whole north side part of the park is not being used anyway, you know, that, that freeway side.
Do you have the exact information? Do you mind, Chair, um, just emailing that to my office so I can have Eric or Jamie follow up? Because I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I cannot, I mean, we can all get together later, but unless the state knows that they can get the land and the access.
Okay.
You know, it's a hard time for them to even start planning the road, right?
Right, okay. Thank you for reminding me. Do you mind emailing my office?
Yeah, I will do my best to, I'm not an engineer, but I will do my best. Get you that chart with, where I think the road can go.
Okay.
And again, it's, it's not gonna be, it's only gonna be open, it's locked all the time unless the authorities open the gate.
Open the gate, okay. And if you, Jamie and I can come down with you and go look at it one day.
Yeah.
I'm a visual person, so I.
Walk toward the back.
Okay.
Park and stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, is that portion before the, um, the road that goes down under, you know, before the homes on the park side? There's that access road for, okay.
Yeah, so probably that's Castle and Cook property. So we can get access to that and then hook up the, the Eager's Road out from that access road.
And it will come out where on each two, what, what, where? Before tech, before the tech.
It'll be a, another on-ramp.
Before the tech park?
Oh, yeah.
Before that, okay.
Waiting for the tech park.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Office, uh, Councilmember District Two, uh, Councilmember Wire. You have a representative online? Kelly was on. Hi, Kelly. He muted. Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, uh, if you can make it a little louder, it'll be good.
Okay, hold on one second.
There you go, you're good.
Good, okay. All right. Happy New Year, um, Chair Hazama and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office, um, just had a couple legislative updates. Um, Councilmember, um, co-introduced Resolution twenty-three, three, zero, eight, which, um, relates to the invasive species, um, con, control efforts. It has passed, uh, committee, um, last week, uh, on the tenth, Housing and Sustainable and Health. Um, and we anticipate it to be up for hearing and adoption at next week's, uh, next week Wednesday's council, full council meeting. Um, Councilmember has also in, co-introduced, um, Bill number one from this year, twenty twenty-four, which relates to, um, herbal cigarettes. Um, this would prohibit the sale of herbal cigarettes to anyone under the twenty, under twenty-one years of age. Um, and we also anticipate this to be up for hearing at next week Wednesday's full council hearing. Um, and then I also wanted to, uh, remind everyone, I know last year we had Bill ten, which actually expired. I believe it was Councilmember Kia Iya who has introduced Bill sixty-four, which takes, takes up the land use ordinance. It has passed, um, first reading in December of last year. But we anticipate council taking up this matter this year. So, um, I can put a link in the chat, uh, where you can find more information. It's like three hundred something pages, lots of information. So, um, if you want to take a look at that. And then lastly, um, I believe that the last month's meeting, someone named Tara had asked about the Kukani Loco fires. Um, HFD responded and said that it was undetermined as to how it started due to the lack of evidence. Um, that's it for me. If anyone has questions for Councilmember, I can take them back.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for Councilmember one? Go ahead, Teresa.
Hey Kelly, Happy New Year.
Hey, same to you, Teresa.
Okay, so, um, I'm hoping that, uh, Councilmember can help. Um, we sent the original request or documentation to, um, the city back in November with regards to, there is a drainage ditch along Wekau'ou Street in Launani Valley. Um, and it intersects with Akamai Nui, so that's right outside the Hawaii Self-Storage. Um, initially there were some issues because there's trees that have fallen down onto the fence line and then blocks this, the sidewalk. But inside the drainage ditch, and I'll forward this email to you as well as Councilmember, there's so much trash and debris that it clogs the drainage and it is a city drainage. I did confirm with Hawaii Self-Storage that it belongs to the city. Um, but again, it could be, it could be Castle and Cook, it could be, um, Tech Park, I don't know. But, um, it's getting worse and with the winds picking up, yeah, so there's like broken trees, I mean, the whole trunk is in there. So, um, I'll forward that to you, but if maybe we can just get that follow up, especially because it blocks the sidewalk, the, the fallen down tree and a lot of people putting a walk up there.
Wasn't this, wasn't there a fallen tree last year too?
Yes, and so it's the same tree, but it's fallen worse and it's breaking the fence. So the, the firemen did come out and initially and cut as much as they could back. But it's just, yeah, so now some people just stop and they just cut it. But that's liability, right? But my biggest concern is the drainage because, you know, with that heavy rains, it just got all, it's clogged up. So I'll forward that over, but if we could follow up.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions for Councilmember Wire's office this evening? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, moving on to Senator De La Cruz's office, I saw David online. Hey, David.
Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Happy New Years, everyone. Um, David Chofer, Senator De La Cruz's office. Um, I just wanted to note that, uh, session would be starting tomorrow, um, tomorrow is opening day. So, uh, by constitution, we're required to open on the third Wednesday at ten AM. So, uh, both, uh, chambers will be in session tomorrow. Um, but other than that, I wanted to highlight, um, some of the legislation that we worked on last year that's really had made, uh, made a lot of news in the last couple of months, uh, which is the Illegal Fireworks Task Force. Um, over the last couple of months, they've really seized, um, a major, uh, major poundage in illegal fireworks. Um, so as of December, um, they had about three or four seizures. Um, and they've collected about seventy thousand pounds of illegal fireworks. Um, and while it didn't make a huge dent in the events that we saw over New Years, uh, what they did mention was that uh, it did make a small dent because they noticed that illegal fireworks activities uh, were limited to New Year's Day and a couple days, uh, prior and after. But what they're really trying to do in this upcoming session is, uh, request for a larger budget amount so that they can, um, one seize, uh, contain and then dispose of all of those illegal fireworks that they're seizing. Um, so we're gonna be working with them this upcoming session, uh, to make sure that their funding gets, uh, funded through the governor's budget. Um, other than that, uh, that's the only thing I wanted to report on and I can take back any questions back to the center. Um, I will mention that, uh, this will most likely be my, this will most likely be the last time you see me in a while. Uh, because there will be new staff that's coming on board. I've transitioned into a different role within the Senator's office. Uh, so, uh, there will be another staffer who takes over for myself and then Malcolm, who you were pretty familiar with for the last couple of months.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Senator De La Cruz's office? You better ask now while David's here, so. All right, David, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, take care. Okay, District Thirty-Eight, Representative Matsumoto.
Okay, good evening Chair and members of the board. Again, Happy New Year and excited that tomorrow is opening day. So for any of you who can come and make it, the Capitol is open. Uh, we'd love to have you stop by, our office is room three oh two. Um, we'll have some wonderful food from Mililani Restaurant. Uh, so come, come and stop by, we'd love to have you. Um, I also wanted to give just a few updates. If you live in District Thirty-Eight, you will be getting a New Year's mailer from me with all of, uh, the session calendar dates. And the reason I wanted to send that out this year, this is my first time doing it, is because I really want more people to get involved in the process. Um, and we have a wonderful video on how to testify. Um, so we'll be sending that, we make it as simple as it possibly can be. And now again, like many of you know, we still have that Zoom access, so you don't actually have to drive down to the Capitol anymore to get involved. Then we'd love to have more testimony. I can't tell you how many times I've sat on a committee and there was a bill and not one person testified on that bill. So having that input is really, really important. Um, I also wanted to, we've done a lot of work with our Women's Legislative Caucus. I'm a co-convenor for the caucus again this year. Um, our legislative package reveal is on Wednesday, January twenty-fourth at the YWCA. There is a QR code if you want to sign up to come to the event, we'd love to have you there. And we'll be unveiling our, our caucus package. Um, our caucus also visited Lahaina, Maui, even though none of us represent the area. Um, I felt it was very important for every single one of us to visit because it's going to be extremely important to see everything. I felt like to see it firsthand because we're gonna be voting on a lot of issues this year. And I'm happy to report, um, as soon as Maui happened, I kind of mentioned it before, but I went and spoke to Speaker and said, you know, this isn't a partisan issue. This isn't a political issue, this is something that affects every single person in the state. And so we created six bipartisan work groups. And like you've mentioned, we have our report that came out. And out of that, we are introducing for I think the very first time in the state of Hawaii, a bipartisan bill package relating completely to Maui. So there will be twelve bills to hoping that sends a really strong message going, we're not, this isn't about politics, this is about helping the people of Maui. So I've been really encouraged, um, by that. Um, though also on this page, there's a lot of community events and updates, so things that we've done in the community, thank you for all of those. I know we put out the volunteer requests at Mililani Library, happy to report, they have now put the tags on all the books. So I know many of you went out to the library to help with that. So that was, I went out twice, it was quite a tedious task, but they finished. Um, so that was wonderful. And then, um, I got to judge the limu contest at Mililani High School. So they cooked with limu and it was, some were, some of them were very, very tasty. Um, I'd also like to update, we had a, um, with Representative Lachika, we had the Wild Fire Town Hall. Um, it was great to see a lot of people come out to that. And so I've been working with Ed Snippen from DOT, um, and he's agreed to start putting in some fire breaks and looking at the emergency road. Again, he said that's the longer haul, but he at least said he, they can start putting in those fire breaks immediately. Um, and so that's at least a start, but hoping to continue that conversation. I'll also be putting a resolution in to be able to have that emergency access for, for Mililani Mauna. Um, and then just the last page will be, uh, just various resources of things going on in the community. And I will have my entire bill package prepared for you for next month. And I will have my entire bill package prepared for you for next month. And that is my report for today.
Hey, thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Representative Matsumoto's office? This evening, anyone online? So are you gonna share your survey results with us later?
Yes, so they're gonna be on my website.
Oh.
Um, so that, we've just finished compiling everything because we gave everybody a little bit more, cards kept coming in past the due date, and so we kept putting those in. So they're gonna be available on repmatsumoto.com. But I can tell you the top five issues that came out, and that's what my bill package is going to be surrounded upon. Number one was cost of living. Number two was homelessness. Three, housing. Four, crime. And five was government transparency or the government process. So those were the top five issues that came out of the survey. There was also some really wonderful bill requests. So I wanna thank everybody who actually wrote in those bill requests. It's very, very helpful. So please continue to do that when we send the surveys out, but it will be posted on the information tab on and repmatsumoto.com within the next week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, District Forty-Six, Representative Perusso.
Aloha.
Uh-oh.
No. Hi.
Hi.
Aloha, good evening. Um, I am still at the Capitol, uh as Rep Matsumoto mentioned, tomorrow is opening day. And um there are a great number of bills that are both still being sent around for signatures and and also still being drafted. So um that work is nearing its completion. Um, and we hope to have some bills that reflect the the actually the active contributions of the community and different groups that have been working with our office. Um, I will say that um the our work around the um Maui fires has really informed the direction of this session already. So the um package that Rep Matsumoto mentioned um is fairly robust. Um, but it is also, um I think, just the beginning of the work. It it is just the first steps and um it's also the kind of work that we can do uh with a pretty grim fiscal forecast. Since the forecast has improved with the Council of Revenue's um projections improving um to the tune of about an increased two hundred and fifty million dollars. Um, we are looking at more capacity to do the work that's going to be necessary to safeguard our communities. Um, but those monies will also be um a site of negotiation, I think, for many interests whose um budgets were cut uh between their agency uh budget development and the governor's request. So we have a lot of holes still in the budget, and I'm particularly interested in the holes in um the Department of Education's budget and in the University of Hawaii's budget. So we're looking closely at that, and um I'll be sharing with you um more detailed analysis of um how, basically, what those cuts will entail, what that will mean for our, these really central core institutions. And then uh looking forward how we can address some of those shortfalls. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention uh is I I wanted to congratulate Milani High School. It's one of the inaugural schools of democracy. So um about a week ago, oh, a little bit more now, um we had a recognition ceremony at Milani High School, and we were joined by the superintendent and um a lot of uh esteemed uh folks in the community, including Rep Matsumoto. So um it it was, the purpose of the recognition was to celebrate Milani High School's um achievement around civic education and to elevate it and to um essentially create a model for other schools to emulate. Um, so Milani has yet another reason to be proud um of the work that's happening in our schools. And I think I'm gonna leave it there. Uh, maybe I will mention just in passing that we've been doing work in the interim around disaster preparedness. So um I've mentioned this before, but in Wahiwa, we've created a system of neighborhood captains. So we're organizing the community down to the neighborhood level. Um, and we have about thirty neighborhoods in Wahiwa. And we're equipping those neighborhood captains with walkie-talkies and connecting them to um ham radio operators just so that should cell towers malfunction or electrical lines come down, we're gonna have uh the means to communicate with each and every neighborhood. And um we we saw in the Lahaina fires that communication is one of the areas that we definitely need to address on a more systemic level. So that's our first effort in doing that. I look forward to um continuing that work in Launani Valley. I expect to be able to um work with folks like Teresa and others to um really develop a robust system of communication. Um, but yeah, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer to the best of my ability.
I'm sorry. Oh, fuck. Any questions for Representative Perusso this evening? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Amy. Appreciate it. Okay, District Thirty-Seven, Representative Lachika. Trish, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me? Aloha.
Yeah, go ahead, Trish. Yeah, we're here.
Let me. Okay, okay, perfect. Um, like Amy, um like Representative Perusso, we're also still in the office. Um, just busy preparing for um our deadlines, our bill introduction and opening day tomorrow. Um, we, my office will be serving some Filipino food, so please come. We have lumpia, pancit, um and some mochi for you to enjoy. Um, a few things I'd like to report on. Um, we shared our, and I think our, well, thank you to um Dylan for posting in the last minutes our end of year newsletter, which is our November, December newsletter, just highlighting um some of our achievements. Um, you know, since, for the year. Um, in early December, um there's one issue that I'm happy to report on, which is the clea- the clearing of the the successful cleanup um operation at the Kipapa Gulch Homeless Encampment, which was one of the largest um homeless encampments in, on US Army Garrison property. And so for several months, um my office had hosted meetings and collaborated with you, the US Army Garrison to really address the scope and scale of that issue and bringing in other stakeholders. So we brought in the Core Ridge Community Association, uh YPO Gentry, the Department of Transportation. And then finally, in early December, um because the encampment had been vacant for about three months. Um, we had to shut down half of Cam Highway, but we did try and put out a advance notice ahead of time. Um, but we were, Department of Transportation was able to bring in six trucks, um and several, a few, a couple dozen um staff to just clear out um that encampment, and we cleared out nineteen tons of debris. So that's thirty-eight thousand pounds of what could be a hazard, um flammable material, um health and safety, you know, um things. And so I tried, you know, I I was there, we were there for the whole, for you, for the most part of the operation. And the before and after pictures were really great, so happy to report on that. And we do have the commitment of the DOT to continue to maintain that. And we have some legislation coming in to also continue to um have these intergovernmental like partnerships. Um, the second thing is Representative Matsumoto had mentioned. Um, we did partner together on, we collaborated on hosting a disaster preparedness and wildfire prevention workshop. And so we had um significant amount of um experts. We had the Hawaii Wildfire uh Management Organization, we had Honolulu Fire Department. We also had um DLNR. And um it was a a great um opportunity to, for the um community to just hear about different like fire mitigation measures, as well as how to like organize as a community to take action in the event of a of a disaster. Um, that was also in December. And then um we're also ha- on ongoing issue that we're still working on, um but we're also happy to report is since the closure of Achieve Zero. Um, as you know, we do not have a homeless provider in the area since this was it. I don't know, it's been almost, it's probably, I don't know if it's early December or late November. Um, but I, our office did meet with the city um DCS, as well as the Homeless Programs Office with DHS. And we're happy to report that because of Gov's emergency proclamation, they were able to fast-track a new um contract in place, so that new contract is now with Ke'ala Ho' West Oahu. And um we're, we're, I'm gonna meet with them soon, but um there will be, they're still hiring for um outreach workers in our area and kind of assessing the need. But there will be a dedicated group that will service our central wild area, because it's just unacceptable that we do not have any type of um homeless provider to help us um in our areas. Uh, the final thing, oh, the final thing is, I'm also very happy to share that um in the new year, um Speaker Psyche had appointed me as the Vice Chair of the House Committee on Education. Um, and I'm very, very excited to be in this new role, looking at um diving deeply into education policy, um the ma- management of the DOE funding. And then uh a lot of the education priorities, as already mentioned by um Representative Perusso. Um, and we already had two info briefings. We just had one today. We're gonna have another one on Thursday. And I think that I will cut my report short, um but just um excited for this new year. And once we, similar to Rep Matsumoto, will have all our bills um as well as the results of our legislative priority survey that we sent out to the district. Um, and in our next newsletter. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Representative. Any questions for Representative's office?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Trish, congratulations. Thank you, Steve Melendez here. Trish, congratulations, uh congratulations on your appointment. I saw that, it was great. Congratulations, we do a lot of good there for education. And I had a question concerning the uh homeless service provider. Because we fought as a board for them and for their predecessor, Leah Ridge, for funding. When that, the current service provider stopped providing services with those funds, we made it back into the budget for the next service provider?
Yes, uh mahalo for that um question. Yes, and for this, at least for the state contract, um they are able to, they are currently working with Nikki at Achieves Zero to close out that program. And then the remaining funds will be um moved over to the new provider. And so we did ask them if they needed emerg- you know, some type of emergency appropriation. But the um head of the Homeless Programs Office believed that there was still a lot, and there's sufficient um funding left in the budget to be able to um extend the program through Central Oahu.
Great, thank you. Where is the new provider located? What city?
Um, Ke'ala Ho' West Oahu is um on the Leeward side, but they also have an um a location in Kapole. So that will be the closest to us, and they're assessing for C- Central Oahu currently.
Great, thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
Um, is that Ke'ala Ho? Or?
Yes.
Lo- okay, Ke'ala Ho. Okay, sorry, I I wasn't sure if I heard you right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Trish. Okay, I believe the Hawaii Honolulu Youth Commission representative is here. So we'll um move on to their presentation.
All right, so my apologies for being late. We actually had our uh meeting today in town and it ended at seven, so I had to race back over here uh to make the meeting. Uh, but I wanted to uh come to the Neighborhood Board and give a formal introduction. My name is Diego. I'm District Two's Honolulu Youth Commissioner. Um, and for those of you that might not know what the Honolulu Youth Commission is, it's uh collection of youth appointed by the mayor or city council to be in an advisory commission for um the sitting county of Honolulu, but also just general government uh for Hawaii. Um, so I kinda wanted to talk about what we've already done this year. So we've partnered with the mayor's managing um office to help them kind of formulate a job shadowing program that hopefully they'll be partnering with the DOE coming this spring break. Um, and the kind of the idea is to get high schoolers um from grades eleven to twelve uh to shadow directors of different departments at the city. Um, to kind of get them involved, see what's going on. Um, so hopefully more information will be out when the the mayor releases that. And then going on to, we recently posted a newsletter, and we're gonna keep those regularly going. So you guys can, if you guys wanna look at our Instagram, uh Honolulu Youth Commission, uh to get regular updates on kind of what we're doing. Uh, we've also passed some resolutions this year regarding specifically agriculture and um rhinoceros beetles or just general invasive insects like fire ants and things like that. Um, and we've also passed um past resolutions, so in the prior years. And then lastly, um this is kind of hopefully if you guys work with youth or have kids of your own, to spread the word. But this next Wednesday, so the twenty-fourth, we're gonna be having a town hall, virtual um informations on our Instagram page or on our website. Um, but we're hoping to hear youth voices, we're hoping to either, you know, hear their concerns um and either be able to get it settled with the proper departments, agencies um or write resolutions going forward, really giving youth a voice. And that's what we're, we're really trying to do as the Youth Commissions, and it's like first few years, we're still trying to get traction, trying to be that um outlet for youth to express their concerns and express their ideas, because um there definitely needs to be one for that. But that's all I had. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Diego. Any questions for the, so you went online? I got a couple. So are you um? Oh, go ahead.
Oh, Chair, I just wanted to find out what the you, you, ages of the youth?
Yeah, so I'm eighteen, but the youth's ages are from fourteen to twenty-four that can be on the commission. So we have a nice range from very end of middle school to late college. Yeah.
Okay, um so does every district have a representative?
Yes, so every district has a representative, and then the mayor appointed points one um commissioner for every repres- or for every district as well.
So does the representative from that district have to reside in that district?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I reside in Tech Park.
You might wanna get with your cohort in District Eight, because this, we kinda cover two districts at one time.
Yes, it's, I'm learning it's a very large district, yeah. Very large.
Okay, no, well, thank you for the information, and then, you know, if you wanna come out and give us a periodic update or anything.
Yeah, and feel free to ask me any questions or direct any youth towards my way.
All right, good luck. Thank you. Okay, moving on the agenda, we have the approval of our November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three board minutes. Uh, board members, are any comments or corrections regarding the minutes? Seeing none, any objections or to adopting the minutes? Any abstentions? Okay, the minutes for November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three have been adopted by unanimous consent. Moving on to reports, uh PAPSY teaming, Central Oahu Regional Park.
No report.
Report education, Mr. Melendez.
Yes, I'll be pleased to present the education report for uh Milani Middle School. The uh first I wanted to share, you know, Congressman's case, Representative wasn't here, but he was here on the fourth. Uh, I wanted to give a shout out to Congressman Case to providing an update, a constituents' report, a talk story report on January four. Uh, he was here, many, several of the, several of our legislators was, legislators was here, and he gave a good report. He handled a lot of uh interesting issues, and he is on the, he's a key, he's not only a key player to Hawaii, but he's on the appropriations committee. So we, we, he discussed, presented several international issues, uh including uh funding uh Israel, talked about uh Ukraine, and I believe that information was captured, it's on his website. Okay, uh on the, concerning the middle school, I wanted to thank uh Principal Thomas Shero for him and bringing his uh, some of his staffers, Mr. Horseman, Earl Han, Corinne Hobata, the assistant principals, and he also has Sharon Pang and Greg Nakasori, Nakasori is the uh other assistant principal. They are the mid- the largest middle school in Hawaii, the number one middle school. And their mission is respect themselves and others, value excellence, and contribute positively to the role, to the, to the world. They have improved their website. If you Google uh Mililani Middle School, they're up in Google's uh Google Schools. And uh online, they have uh the video information concerning the SEC, also the PTSO. A video on the the parking lot, because a parking lot, the parents, when they pick up and drop off the kids. A video on the, the parking lot, because a parking lot, the parents, when they pick up and drop off the kids, it's important for traffic flow. They also have a virtual tour of the school, which is really important for those that are considering attending the school. They also have the D O, the D O E calendar, the bell schedule, the lunch program. I want to make mention about the lunch program there. They also have provision for reduced or free lunch meals. Uh, when I was on the board for the P T S O, uh we noticed that some. Students may fall short uh towards the end of the month on their uh lunch count. So we made it a, an issue to uh have a separate fund, and we did that back then. That was like six years ago. It's that no one, if a student's hungry, they're gonna eat. It's just. We're doing it for them. Just, it's just an honor and a pleasure to do that. They also have this online, the uh bus transportation, P T S O membership. Blazer calendar, locker request, lunch menu, and they have the, the, their own newsletter. I wanted to give a shout out to uh. Two individuals, to Pa- Kelly and Kenzie. Uh, American Savings Bank had a uh, a competition. And Pa Kelly and Kenzie for Mililani Middle School, they won, they submitted a business plan. The name of the business plan was uh two times recycling, and they won a check for twenty-five thousand dollars. The twenty-five thou- twenty-five thousand dollar check went to Mililani Middle School, and a shout out to them. Thank you for your ingenuity and in- innovation. Uh, thank you for that, and uh. Also, the, the school is looking for some uh, for substitute teachers, cafeteria works, and security tenants. Uh, if anybody's interested in that, you can call Mililani Middle School at six two seven nine thousand and ask for uh Earl Han. Or Jeff Horseman or Greg Nakasoni. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, military and civil defense, sorry, report parks and recreation?
No report.
Planning, permitting, and zoning? That was Stanton. I don't have for transportation, recognition and service awards, Alice? Okay, any other announcements this evening? Anyone online? Seeing none, our next Neighborhood Board meeting will be held here on Tuesday, February twentieth. Twenty-twenty-four at seven PM, as well as via WebEx. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.